Thank you all for joining us. You just want to stay on the line, Tom?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Thomas Ray.
Thanks, Treasure.
Are you staying around for the next meeting also, or is this it?
I can.
Yeah, you're not required to, but it's fine. Obviously. Okay. Are you ready to roll the next meeting?
We are.
How many are joining us in person?
One. In terms of board?
Sorry?
Just one in terms of board members.
Okay, who is that?
Jim, Jim Lobston.
Hey, Jim, thank you for being there.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I'd like to call the order, the February 22nd, 9:15 a.m. meeting of the Supplemental Retirement Board of Trustees. Members, we have an Ethics Act that identifies conflicts or potential conflicts of interest. Should any conflicts of interest occur, please let me or my son or anyone in the room be made aware of that during that period. As we call the meeting to order, I'd ask that you join us in our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I salute to North Carolina flag, I salute to the flag of North Carolina and pledge to the Old North State, love, loyalty, and faith. As a reminder, I'm sorry I can't join you by video, but as a reminder, anybody who wishes to make a public comment during this meeting, please let Lisa Norris know, and we'll get to that in the public comment section. Please note that our meeting is being recorded and be posted online as with all other board materials. We ask if you're not speaking that you mute your phone. We'll be taking a roll call by name for votes without objection. Anybody who makes a motion or second to a motion be considered a yes vote. Board members, if you leave the meeting for any purposes, any reason, please announce your departure so we can record those in the in the board meeting minutes. Any text or communication between board members during the meeting, even on personal cell phones, to the extent that they concern the business of the meeting will be considered public record. With that, I'll ask the secretary to call the roll.
Treasure Falwell?
Aye.
Chavella Thomas?
Present.
Lorraine Johnson?
Here.
James Lobston?
Here.
Greg Patterson?
Present.
Bob Shay? Nels Roslin?
Here.
Steve Bean?
Here.
And Robert Hillman?
Present.
Great, thank you.
Okay. We have a quorum. I've already mentioned the Ethics Awareness Act. I want to extend a one welcome to Shanta Bali. She's now joined our SR team. And she joined us in January as our compliance officer, replacing Alan, who is retiring. And her experience includes a background in education, finance, and banking. Shanta, we welcome you to our board meeting today, and thank you for your commitment to our program.
Thank you, Treasure Falwell.
With that, we'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minute November 30th.
No move. Second.
The, the move is the second?
Who was the second?
Bob Hillman.
Hey, Bob, thank you. Motion second being made. Any further discussion regarding the meeting minute approval of November 30th? Hearing now, the clerk will call the roll.
Treasure Falwell?
Aye.
Chavella Thomas?
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson?
Aye.
James Lobston?
Aye.
Greg Patterson?
Aye.
And Nels Roslin?
Aye.
Hey, thank you. We'll now pass the baton to Jeff Hancock, who will discuss a review of our administrativeness, which we have to do on an annual basis. At the end of his presentation, we'll ask for a vote. Jeff?
Well, thank you, Treasure. So, board members, as you know, over the last few years, we've been trying to reduce the amount of of reserves that we have for fees. That, that number has, has crept up, as you know, and back in 2022, we did reduce the amount of our fee by cutting it in half. We further reduced it again in May of 2023, but we've just not seen the progress in reducing the fee reserves to the level that we would have expected to see. That is in part due to the amount of float earnings that we receive. With the interest rates up as high as they are and the average, the average outstanding balances, we're just seeing a higher level or a positive impact that those float earnings are having on those reserves. And so, in order to really make some, make some meaningful strides in getting those fees down, staff would like to recommend that we do a fee holiday for the next 12 months, which means we will not charge a fee over the next 12 months, and then we will come back in the first quarter 2025 board meeting again and review where we stand, and then make another, make another recommendation at that point in time. Any questions from the board members on the staff's recommendation?
Thank you, Jeff.
Make a motion to approve the recommendation.
I second, Chavella.
Thank you. Motion is second, and for newer board members, previously, we had no latitude. It had to be all or none. But we have legislation that gives the staff the ability to go halfway or partway if need be. So, very excited about this. What are the, what do you suspect the total savings are, Jeff, to the plan members? Annual?
So, there will be about, about $1.6 million in savings over the next 12 months.
Okay. And with Christie and Combs, are they aware of this?
They're aware of it, and we already have the press, the press relief drafted.
Okay. And do you recall how many years we've had a fee holiday?
We did one, 2019. It was again in 2020, and then this will be the third that I'm aware of.
Okay, all right. All right. And our reserves are approximately?
$9 million.
Okay. All right. And annual cost to run the plan?
Is about $1.88 million.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, we have a motion second on the table. Any further discussion? Hearing now, the clerk will call the roll.
Treasure Falwell?
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson?
Aye.
James Lobston?
Aye.
Mike Patterson?
Aye.
Nels Roslin?
Aye.
And Robert Hillman?
Aye.
Motion second being made. That's a unanimous vote. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Jeff, and staff for making that jump up on the table. Our next agenda item is Reed Chisholm to talk about legal matters.
First follow-up item from the last meeting, staff work with Calend to put in place the two-year contract extension. It was approved by the board in, at the November meeting. And so now, the Calend contract runs from March 31 of 26. You have a minor proposed amendment to the 401K plan in your board materials. It's one that was unintentionally admitted from a prior set of amendments that removed two of the requirements for taking a hardship distribution. Previously, before a participant could take a hardship distribution, the participant had to take a loan and stop contributing to the plan. There were two references in the plan document to ceasing contributions. One reference was deleted in the prior set of amendments, the other was not. So, the current amendment does not affect the operation of the plan. It just brings the hardship distribution privilege provision in line with the plan's operation. Staff recommends the adoption of the amendment in the materials. Any questions?
This is Nels, I make a motion to approve?
Do I hear second?
Second. Steve?
Motion second being made. Any further discussion? Hearing now, the clerk will call the roll.
Treasure Falwell?
Aye.
Chavella Thomas?
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson?
Aye.
James Lobston?
Aye.
Greg Patterson?
Aye.
And Robert Hillman?
Aye.
As you know, there are two sets of policies adopted by the board. There are the governance policies and the policies for participants and employers. Staff generally reviews policies at least annually and brings recommended updates to the board. This is similar to the approach that we take with plan documents. For today's meeting, staff reviewed five of the six governance policies. The investment transaction disclosure policy was not included. A member of the board adopted a major revision of the policy last August. Staff proposes revisions to two of the policies, vendor selection policy and manager selection policy. Your meeting materials include the revised policies as well as a summary of the changes in the cover memo. But I want to note just a few items. The changes in the, to the vendor selection policy are clarifications, including bringing the wording of the policy in line with current practice. One of the changes is a provision that permits the department to amend the contract, provided that the amendment does not increase the cost of the contract or otherwise substantively change SRPs' rights or obligations. However, as a reminder, the board's approval is still required to renew or extend the term of a contract with one of our four major vendors or to extend a contract of more than $24,000 per year. And also, as a reminder, our four major vendors in the policy are the record keeper, custodian, investment consultant, and auditor. In the manager selection policy, an exemption is added for amendments to the investment guidelines, so long as the amendments comply with the investment policy statement and don't change the manager's investment strategy. This, this addition acknowledges current practice. Also, responsibility for the diligence checklist was moved to the chief investment officer, which aligns with IMD's approach. And finally, the investment recommendation memo is no longer required to list the person who initially suggested the investment opportunity to IMD or the investment consultant. This requirement is, is unnecessary because a manager's search, as you know, is initiated by the board, and the search criteria, which are in the policy, determine the managers who are considered to be retained by them. So, with that, staff recommends approving the revised policies that are in your materials. But if there are any questions, I'll answer those.
Any questions? While here and there, I'll entertain a motion.
This is Nels, I'll make a motion to approve? Second, Steve?
Motion second being made. Any further discussion? Hearing now, the clerk will call the roll.
Treasure Falwell?
Aye.
Chavella Thomas?
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson?
Aye.
James Lobston?
Aye.
Greg Patterson?
Aye.
Robert Hillman?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now, we're on to Michael and Matt. I don't know if they're joining us in person or remotely, but they're in person. Welcome. And you have the floor.
Thanks, Treasure Falwell. We are here in person. Thanks for the time today, everyone. Today, we want to give an update on Q4, but we mainly want to focus today on the migration of the North Carolina plans from their original platform over to our platform. That occurred, you know, a little over two weeks ago now. Day, yeah, two weeks plus two.
Hey, 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 Matt, it's Treasure Falwell. As you go through your presentation, you know, pay special attention to any concerns that I'm getting through personal email or our staff's getting regarding this conversion and just give us the good with the bad, please.
Definitely, definitely will, sir. Thank you. So, in terms of--
I mentioned that, Matt, this is Chavella. Can I mention that I'm not sure who's moving papers, but it's distorting me being able to hear who's ever talking.
We'll try to do a better job of that, Chavella. Thank you. Matt, you have the, Michael, you have the floor? Or Matt?
All right, thanks. And this is, this is Mike talking now. Matt, I'm going to turn it over to Matt here in a couple of minutes. All right, so in terms of a migration update, Treasure, to your point, there's a, there's a lot of good going on right now, but there's also some concerns that I want to make sure that we address today as well. In terms, in terms of the migration update, both the 401K plan and the 457 plan successfully migrated over the first weekend of February. All of the data has successfully migrated. All of the funds are in the right spots. They're in the right sources. All the dollars tied out nicely. We provided, provided a nice report to Jeff for, for your records in terms of all, all of the transactions. All of the, the mappings of the investments to the new goal maker allocations, all of that successfully occurred. Most importantly, we came out of the quiet period. Members have been able to transact and do all of their normal money in, money out, and exchanges. And, and in addition to that, I know that Bank of New York Mellon's up after us. With your custodian, all of the daily files that we exchange with Bank of New York Mellon has all, has all gone off successfully. In, in terms of, in terms of interaction with your subplans, we've seen good, good metrics there as well, where, you know, there's literally over 5,000 contacts around the state at your subplans that have access to our plan sponsor center. Over 2,100 of those folks have already logged into that plan sponsor center, and that represents about 903 of your total subplans. So, we're seeing good interaction with that plan sponsor center. And then, in addition to the payroll, if you think about this plan, it's all decentralized payroll. So, all of the subplans load their own payroll, and they do it through four pri, four primary methods in order to get that data over to Empower. As we sit here today, 55% of all of those payroll, of all of those subplans have successfully loaded their payroll. And we're working with those other subplans that have not yet loaded their payroll. Some of those, some of those are because they're on more of a monthly cycle, so they won't load their first payroll on the new platform till later this month. But we're also then going to work with the ones that we would have expected to load now to see if they need any further assistance to, to do that. In terms of the payroll loading, you know, I mentioned that there's several different ways to do that. Three of those are all working very, very well so far. Those methods just internally that Empower, we call those guided payrolls, those that load through a secure FTP file process or that use the PSC to do a file upload. Speaking to your, to your point, Treasure, the good along with the concerns. The concerns are, the first couple of weeks, we've definitely seen some increased call volume. We've also had some, some issues with the subplans that load payroll via email in terms of just making sure that the right directions were being followed to get that information over to us. And we've been actively working with those subplans to, to correct anything that we see in the email submission process. In terms of, in terms of specifically the call, the call center, the first few days post-migration, we were getting over 2,000 phone calls per day from participants. Those, that has slowly come down. We're now averaging about 1,500 calls per day. So, you know, that has led to some increased, increased times in terms of waiting to, to get to a customer call center representative. But those metrics are starting to come down too. For example, the abandonment rate, the first week of migration, first week post-migration was about 18.4%. The second week that we're in now, that's dropped all the way to 9.7. The, the average length of a phone call has already come down to 30 seconds from week one to week two. And the speed of answer, the average speed of answer the first week was about five minutes and seven seconds. The second week, it's been all the way down to two minutes and 38 seconds. And then, that big metric that we all track, how many are answered within 20 seconds of a first calling in? The first week, it was 44%. The second week, that increased all the way to 41%. So, from, from a call center perspective, we're definitely using all of our forecasting tools. We're also making sure that we're moving folks around in terms of the staffing hours that folks are working. As part of the transition over to Empower, all of the folks that handled your calls before on the prudential side have all come over to Empower, but you're also now opened up to our entire custom government call center. So, folks that just take, take phone calls from all of our governmental clients, so they're, they're truly educated in, in the government plans. But, Mr. Treasure, to your point on some of the emails that you received, there's definitely been a couple of instances where there's been incorrect information provided or it's taken multiple phone calls to get the right answer. So, we've had good conversations with our call center leadership, and we're reinforcing that with coaching and also additional training to the entire call center that handles, handles the North Carolina calls, just to reinforce all of the specifics on how your plan operates. We also have a great feature in place that's the callback feature. So, you know, any participant, when they call in, if it's projected to be more than a two-minute wait, they can opt into a callback feature so they, they don't have to, to wait on, on hold. We're, we're also seeing some really good statistics in terms of participant. Before I, before I get into participant web registration, I also want to share just the overall survey results for the participants that have called into your call center. So, on a five-point scale, the survey results questions, overall, overall experience so far through two weeks, that's, that's 4.28 out of 5 is the average score there. The, the ease of doing business is, is four out of a five-point scale. And then, were you satisfied with the person that you just spoke with, or would you have hired the person that you just spoke with? That's at 4.44% out of five, on a five-point scale. So, again, yes, there's pockets where we can definitely do better, and we will do better. Like with, with everything during our, our tenure working with you, we own it, the good and the bad. And whenever we make mistakes, we, we own it and we correct it. We will get better as, as time goes on. But overall, through the first couple of weeks, there's a lot of good things going on and then a few things that we need to, to get our arms a little bit better around. The last thing that I want to share before I let Matt take just a couple of minutes to give an update on what the, his team, the 18 dedicated reps are seeing across the state. I'd also like to share web registration. So, we talked a little bit earlier about the subplans and how they've registered to work with the plan sponsor website. From a participant perspective, we've already got 15% of all participants web-registered within two weeks. That is higher, like most, most governmental plans. After they come on to Empower's platform, two weeks in, they're typically right around 10%. So, we're already at 15%. So, that's something that we're actively, actively monitoring to get, get those participants back into web registration to interact with our website and also with the new enhanced web app that provides so much more functionality than what, what the Prudential app provided. So, with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Matt to give, to give a few migration comments too for, for the field team perspective. Thanks, Mike. Good morning, Treasure Falwell, members of the board, staff. Thanks for your time. You know, to kind of build off of what Mike shared, you have the field team. We have 18 folks across the state dedicated to this plan who are doing education with participants, meeting with eligibles, and they also have relationships with those local employers. And I think to Mike's point, with a plan this size, this is one of the biggest plans in the country, 300,000 participants. Each subemployer has anywhere from five to 10 contacts in payroll, finance, HR. There's a lot of folks that we've reached out to. There was a lot of work that was done to communicate with them leading up to migration. One of the things, to Mike's point, the field team did to kind of complement that is actually reach out to a lot of those employers. Our goal was to get to all of them for migration. In the fourth quarter, and I'll walk through the general numbers here in a couple of minutes, we did almost 1,000 calls in the fourth quarter to employers to get them ready for migration, to encourage them to open emails, to attend webinars, to make sure they're taking action. But to Mike's point, we do have pockets. You know, maybe somebody didn't open an email, they didn't attend a webinar. So, to Mike's point, we own that, and we're continuing as a field team to complement the other communications going on, to personally reach out. In January, we had almost 500 employer meetings, getting them ready for migration. So, a lot of proactive outbound, that's 50% higher than our normal activity in January with employers. Leading up to and through migration, in addition to the Empower webinars that have been hosted for folks going through these enhancements, this transition, the North Carolina team, in partnership with our operations team that's dedicated to this plan, we actually hosted three special webinars just for employers of North Carolina. 1,600 registrations for those events. Over the three sessions we had, we had about 1,200 folks attend. We saw a 70% attendance rate. Normally, with our webinars for employers, we get about 40 to 50% of the folks that register who show up day of. We had 70% of the people who registered for these January, February sessions attend. So, not only were the registrations high, the attendance rate was high, which tells us there's a need out there. And post-migration being what, two weeks, little, two weeks and a couple of days in, we've seen a lot of interaction even post-migration with employers. I think we're up to probably 650 interactions with employers. So, folks are calling our call center, they're calling our service team, but those local councilors across the state, they have relationships, many of them 10, 15, 20 years, and they're getting calls from those employers. And we're also reaching out to employers as well, just to make sure they have what they need. We're walking people through how to navigate the website, how to log in, how to access reports, how to do payroll. But there are a lot of folks out there, they may be a payroll specialist in that local government office. We're trying to connect them with operational experts on our team where appropriate. Thematically, one of the biggest things I think we've seen that Mike shared is, you know, questions on navigating the website, questions on logging in, questions on how to get to reports and how to do payroll. So, that's thematically the biggest questions we're getting. A lot of positives though too as well. So, Treasure Falwell, to kind of balance the good and the bad, you know, we're getting a lot of comments from both employers and participants about enjoying the new web experience, they like the new mobile app, some of the features that we're talking about in our webinars and our sessions, the enhancements that come through, like the ability to link outside accounts, the new dashboard experience, you know, they're capturing net worth. There's a lot of new features on the website. We're continuing to educate folks on that front. From a participant standpoint, we're also doing a lot. We've just started back up with our one-on-one activity, our normal group meeting activity, but we're also hosting webinars for participants about the new enhancements and the new experience. Next week, we have two sessions set up. They're statewide events. I think we're at 1,500 registrations right now with participants who will attend those sessions. We'll help walk them through the enhancements, how to navigate the website. But given the questions we're getting, it's going to take time. As much communication as we did for the last six months, given the volumes, we know there's more we can do. So, we're going to keep reaching out, we're going to keep hosting webinars, we're going to keep reaching out to employers. I would say probably for the next 60 to 90 days, we'll see a lot of these types of migration-oriented interactions and education events, and we'll continue to revisit that, share what we're hearing, as well as the good, positive comments we'll continue to share with staff and the board at the next meeting. I did want to provide some updates on just the close of the year and our overall education. Before I do that, are there any questions about migration?
Any questions for Mike or Matt in terms of the migration?
I've got none.
All right. I am going to draw your attention to page--
What was that? Did you say you have one?
None, actually. None.
Thank you. I'm going to draw your attention to page 37 in the materials. You'll see a snapshot of our activity for the full year. Top half of the page is the fourth quarter. What I'll generally say for the fourth quarter is, this is a very strong quarter, a quarter that I think capped off a very strong year. You'll see October, November, December, and every one of our key engagement metrics, group meetings, individual meetings, employer meetings, we were higher year-over-year. In particular, our group meetings. And this is a trend I've shared, I think, the last few meetings. We're continuing to see more group meetings being held, many thanks to our employer content. We're continuing to see more group meetings being held, many thanks to our employer contacts because that partnership was drives that activity. A lot of higher, a big increase in group meeting attendees. We had fifteen thousand four hundred and seventy-three attendees in the fourth quarter, it's up thirty-six percent if you compare it to fourth quarter of twenty twenty-two. Total meeting attendees, bottom of the top chart there, twenty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty-three. It's twenty-five percent higher over quarter four of twenty twenty-two. The other thing I will draw attention to in the top half of the page is October. The last time we met, we were just coming off of our National Retirement Security Month. October was a huge month, and you can see that was a big portion of our activity came from October and the success. So many thanks to Tom, Jeff, staff, Christie Zora, very successful campaign. If you recall, twenty twenty-two, this board and the program won an AGDO award for the campaign the year prior. October twenty-three, I think, was an even greater success. We had more engagements, we did more activity, we helped more people, we did over twelve thousand total meeting attendees in October. The other item I'll point out in Q four, I kind of hit on this in my opening comments with migration, we had one thousand two hundred and sixty-two employer meetings in the fourth quarter. A large portion of that were meetings, we had outbound calls to employers about migration. So that's an eighty percent increase from Q four of twenty twenty-two. Big driver of that was getting ready for the enhancements that just rolled out a couple of weeks ago. Bottom of the page, you'll see a summary for the year, the first quarter, the second, the third and the fourth, and then a year to date roll up there. Bottom of that chart, ninety thousand two hundred and ten attendees. That's thirty-one percent higher than twenty twenty-two. And again, similar to the fourth quarter, we saw across the year an increase in group meetings. Group meeting attendance was almost fifty percent higher, but also seeing increases in individual meetings. We just met with staff yesterday to look at January results. The activity and the success of twenty-three, we're seeing actually carried into twenty-four as well. We saw increasing levels again in January with buzz group meetings and one-on-one activity. So what's ahead next sixty to ninety days? I think two big focus areas for the field team. Continue to support all the employers and all the participants out there, any questions related to migration. We know folks are calling the call center, we want to do everything we can as a field education team to help them as well. That's mission critical, that's focus number one. Focus two is continuing to connect our education and our resources with all of the eligibles and all the participants out there. So continuing our one-on-one activity, continuing group meetings, our overall outreach to employers. We're hosting sessions, we're doing a lot with retirees every month. Treasurer, follow up, I just wanted to personally thank you. I know you attended one of our sessions last week, that was a roadmap to retirement session. We're seeing really strong attendance in those sessions. I know you were also in one of our sessions this week, really good feedback from that interaction with folks. Those types of events will continue. We are also preparing for a campaign, I can share updates on that at our next meeting in April. That'll be our spring campaign, we'll be focusing on National Financial Literacy Month. So we thought that's a great month to do more engagements at a local, regional, as well statewide level. So you'll see a lot of activity to support that national month of education. And we're also focusing on groups like first responders, the K through twelve space. We have a hundred and fifteen school systems out there, tremendous opportunity to keep finding ways to connect, not just with the districts, but also the buildings and the principals. We did some things last year in the fourth quarter to reach out to principals. We're gonna continue to do that as we move forward. So all in all, a very strong year in twenty-three, thank you for your support and partnership. We saw a lot of success. I won't go through all the details, but the education is important, but I'll end with slide thirty. You'll see a breakout of the enrollment activity. We saw tremendous engagement with group meetings, one-on-ones, employer meetings. But we're also seeing great actions being taken by eligible employees, by enrolling this program. We had almost twenty-eight thousand enrollments in twenty twenty-three. And just to bring some context to that, before the pandemic, twenty nineteen, we had twenty-two thousand enrollments. We hit twenty twenty, COVID hit, we saw a drop, I think we got down to around seventeen thousand enrollments. From there on out, twenty-one record highs for this program with twenty-three thousand enrollments. In twenty twenty-two, over twenty-six thousand, and we hit another high watermark in twenty-three with almost twenty-eight thousand enrollments. So not only are folks engaging, we see them embracing the new solutions we've brought forward. They've embraced hybrid, we're going out more in person, but we're doing a lot virtually and we're getting more and more comments that employers like that flexibility. And I don't think it's a coincidence that we're also seeing more people taking taking action. So we're gonna continue to grow this hybrid model, continue to focus on the enhancements we're bringing forth. There are a lot of other things I think we have that we can tap into now, which we're excited to talk to the board about in subsequent meetings. And many thanks to our employers, I won't go through the details. Slides thirty-nine through forty-three, employers are critical to this program, their partnerships help us connect with people. They help us to help folks take action by enrolling other things that help their retirement readiness. But employers are also taking action with adding plans, adding optional features. We had over a hundred enhancements last year with employers adding plans or adopting features and capabilities. So very exciting year and thank you again for your support and partnership. So any answers? Yeah, any questions? In the in the interest of that, that'll wraps up our update today and the three questions for us.
This is Treasurer, I just want to send people's attention to, I forget what page it is, it talks about the folks who are changing their matches and that type of stuff. Is that, that's in this report, right, Tom?
It is, it's on page forty-one and forty-two.
Yeah. Is anybody there from the league or the County Commissioner Association?
Not in the room, don't know if anyone's online or not.
Okay. Obviously, board members, we get complaints about the employer contribution rate on the pension plan for local governments. And this is something I predicted nine years ago and it's actually happening. And I think I think it's important that we communicate with the league and municipalities and the County Commissioners Association that these cities and counties in their own policies are making decisions to go to three, four, five percent matches for their four oh one to four fifty-seven plans, and that's their business and that's all fantastic. But, you know, that is discretionary. So it's kind of difficult for them to complain about the employer contribution rate for the pension plan when they are making these other decisions that increase their cost by another fifty percent or so. So I'm glad they're doing this for their employees, but just I think that page really illustrates some things that are going on there. So I just wanted to for all the board members to sort of look at all this in tandem. And my memory is still good, but I think the employer contribution rate now is good. I think it's probably seventeen percent this year or close to it for the teachers plan. Seventeen percent of payroll and for the elders plan, I think it's probably around twelve, twelve and a half percent. So just to draw your attention, those two pages is all I wanted to do and make sure the league and municipalities and County Commissioners Association are aware of that. Okay. Thank you, Michael and Matt, where are you all off to now?
Heading back to good old Ohio, Treasurer, follow up.
Well, good, yeah. Traveling mercifully, both of you. Sorry I wasn't in person. We're now ready for Anders and Matt from BNY Mellon, are they in person or remote?
They're in person.
Thank you, sorry I'm not there to to formally greet you, but thank you for your presentation and you have the floor.
Great, thank you. So good morning and thanks for inviting BNY Mellon to the board meeting. I'm Matt Coburn, I'm responsible for the business relationship with BNY Mellon. I'm joined by my colleagues, this is my manager and asset owners, covering for the senators, Anders Reinerse and Bill Harwell, who is the head of service. We're gonna spend some time today talking about BNY Mellon's strategic areas of focus. I'm gonna talk about five specific examples that have relevance to the SRP on where BNY Mellon is putting their focus and bringing about enhancements. First, if you don't mind showing slide two, I'd be remiss if I didn't provide a very, very quick BNY Mellon update. Notably that BNY Mellon remains the number one global custodian amongst peers. We're at a forty-five point seven trillion in assets, which is actually up one point five trillion in assets from the time that I was here last year. We've done that through a lot of growth, we've actually had great success amongst editors over the past year. Running business at about a three to one ratio, brought in some very large public funds, some notable names in the industry. So it just goes to show, you know, really where BNY Mellon is succeeding and the SRP is well serviced. But you know who you who we are, you know what we do. So with that, I'm actually going to hand it off to my colleague, Andrew Price.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you everyone for the time today. I'm gonna talk a bit on the next slide about our strategic areas of focus and how we're using our 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 position in the industry to continue help powering the retirement futures for many of our clients and their their clients as well. So from a area of focus perspective, we invest about one point two billion dollars on an annual basis in this business that we provide to the SRP and many other clients here around around the world. And that investment is divided into four areas. The first area is investing in our core, and that is our core business of custody, accounting, record keeping, performance analytics, et cetera. This business is why we are a two hundred and forty-year-old institution, why we are the world's largest custodian and one that we continue to invest in and grow. That investment includes investing in resiliency. That resiliency for us includes operational resiliency and cybersecurity resiliency. To the question earlier, cybersecurity is a focus for us. We we do invest a significant amount to ensure that our clients' assets are safe behind our walls because trust is the foundation by which BNY Mellon is built. Matt will talk a bit about what some of the investments in our core capabilities are as far as building new solutions and optimizing that efficiency for us and our clients as we get into his part of the presentation. Our next pillar is around investing in the future. We plan to be here for another two hundred and forty years. And and to do that, we need to invest in in the next generation of solutions beyond what we have today. And that includes investment in data and working with fintechs around the ecosystem to accelerate innovation to the benefit of our clients and their participants. Our third investment pillar is in our people. This business is equal parts technology and people. So when you call us, you have to have the right person to pick up the phone to answer your question. So we are investing in both retaining and attracting the talent needed to serve our clients through a number of programs, both to attract new to the workforce talent, retain talent throughout their career and provide them with good career opportunities for growth. The fourth pillar of our strategic objectives is to deliver for our clients. Combining both our technology and our people, we do so in a proactive and consultative manner in a way that leads with our position in the industry, giving some insights as to what we're seeing happening in in the industry and helping share and bring that insight and knowledge to our clients. And it's that insight and knowledge that I'll spend just a minute or two on on the next two slides. We're talking to our clients about what some of the keys are that our clients are seeing as far as achieving operational excellence. And those keys, we've we've captured that into five different areas, and the first of which is innovation. Current market conditions are driving a need for innovation, and that innovation is seen to be more powerful through collaboration, both internally across organizations, but also with peers in the industry. And that innovation, much of which is focused on driving a more scalable and resilient operating model. Clients and and sponsors are concerned about the future and the ability to provide resilient operations to serve participants. And so focus on ensuring the right people, process and technologies are poised to do that is a key area of focus for many of our clients. As we move to the next slide, there are three other keys that are in focus for our clients. The first of which is data, the recognition that data is a strategic priority, how to harness and use data to make better investment decisions and decisions for participants. How to discover and adopt new technologies as new technologies continue to be deployed in the world faster than they ever have before. There's a recognition that organizations need to be able to adapt to those new technologies in a very efficient and capable manner. And last, but certainly not least, is talent. The recognition that the the talent landscape that serves your participants, both in client shops, but also in ours, is critical. And that investment that we're making is also the same investment that many of our clients are making. And a focus on attracting and retaining talent can be a challenge in many of our client organizations. So it's this type of information that we glean from our clients that helps us position where we invest our our firm's assets to continue to serve our clients, and we believe we're aligned accordingly. As Matt mentioned, we are growing, we're a healthy business, we continue to be a leading provider of public plans across the United States and globally with more than two and a half trillion of assets that are custody for public retirement plans here in the Americas. I'll turn it over to Matt to talk through some of the innovation that we're we're making as far as progress on our core capabilities.
Great, thank you. So so what specifically is BNY Mellon doing, if you don't mind going to the next slide? So what specifically is BNY Mellon doing to, you know, really to enhance the client experience? And I chose, you know, there are several things, I chose five specifically for this meeting here. The first one is probably what I'm most excited about, and that is our collaboration with a software company called Exceptor. So Exceptor is a known industry leader. We're gonna be utilizing them for our global tax services product offering. And why I'm excited about this is a lot of clients, especially a lot of public funds who invest globally over the years have have stated their, you know, their challenges that they have to say, hey, look, you know, investing globally, dealing with the paperwork associated with that, the tax implications, it's become more complex. We expect more, we want more from a service provider and being able to help us out. And that's exactly why we we collaborated with Exceptor. So we're gonna be rolling out our collaboration in three phases. The first phase really is to leverage their software to help pre-populate a lot of global tax documents so that when we put them in front of a client, they're a lot more signature ready. In phase two, we're gonna be utilizing the the software to ensure that we immediately immediately identify all of the relief at source tax opportunities so that we don't have to rely on tax reclaims, because again, it's better to identify those relief that relief at source right upfront, get the beneficial tax withholdings that are due to you so that you don't have to, you know, wait years for your reclaims to then come in. And then really in the last phase of the Exceptor software offering, it's enhanced reporting. I personally haven't seen the enhanced reporting yet, I'm excited about it. I think, you know, a snapshot that I was that was given to me sounds exactly what, you know, folks like, you know, Jeff and Chris that we've talked about over the years, what you're looking to see in some of that enhanced tax reclaim reporting. So again, there's a lot of relevance here, I think this is going to be great, and this is actually kicking off in twenty twenty-four.
So Matt, in terms of the impact on SRP, will that help with 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 some of the with some of the documentation that we have to supply, so?
Exactly.
And then as well as getting the tax reclaim sooner, because I think right now we're probably one of two or two or three years behind?
Yeah, and it all depends on market. So depending on the market, you know, some markets will pay within a year, some markets will pay in two, three years. If it's Italy, for example, you're lucky to get paid in five. So really, all depends on market. But again, what our with with the first phase is looking to do is take the administrative burden off of the client. Say, okay, you know what? When we get these documents in front of you, we want to put them in front of you as pre-populated as legally possible is the way that I would put it, okay? Pre-populated, so that you can look at them, give it a quick once over, say, yes, this looks correct. BNY Mellon knows who we are, they've captured our entity type correctly, and we're ready to just go ahead and sign. That way, you can turn them around quicker and we can get them to the market quicker.
Great.
The second item I would mention is financial recovery technologies, FRT, organization that I know that some of the North Carolina entities know well. So about a year or so ago, we announced a strategic partnership with FRT where clients who wanted to contract for FRT services could do through do so through BNY Mellon. We've actually, BNY Mellon itself is contracted with FRT. So we've taken our claims filing process, so the the process of actually determining eligibility of a claim and then subsequently filing that claim. BNY Mellon is is utilizing FRT ourselves for those purposes. FRT is a best-in-class service provider, they really are the gold standard. You know, so this is an example of where BNY Mellon said, hey, look, you know what? We're a great custodian, we do a lot of great, we do a lot of things well, we don't have to be the best in all areas ourself. Let us work with the best in the industry service providers. So that's exactly what we did with FRT here. The third pillar over the data intake and recon. So we're doing a lot of interesting things to, again, based on client feedback over the years, to better our reconciliation processes. So some of the feedback that we've had from clients is we see areas for improvement where our investment managers have told us that there's areas for improvement in how we communicate monthly reconciliation packages with each other. So we're utilizing a tool called GRX to provide a more granular security bubble. So we're utilizing a tool called GRX to provide a more granular security level reconciliation. This was something that we've worked on with investment managers upfront. And I think probably one of the, or two of the key takeaways with this is that by working with the investment managers upfront and implementing this tool, we're creating a standard, uniform reconciliation so that there's not no one-off or exception-based reconciliation. So if you think about that from an audit standpoint, you know, an industry standard standpoint, are we following a best practice? Well, you would be because, again, this is something that it would be a uniform approach. So this is something we're really, really excited about. The next one, P Control. So P Control is a technology that allows us to identify exception situations. So Anderson mentioned earlier, you know, focus on scalability. What BNY Mellon is focused on, you know, itself internally, is to look at processes, to look at, you know, operations that we do and say, okay, is it uniform across the board? Are we doing something different for this particular client? Are we following a best practice? And if not, let's call out that exception and find a solution for it to get into that standard model. Because, again, I think at the end, clients really want two things. They want timeliness of reporting or timeliness of data, the accuracy of reporting, right? And by being in a standard model and reducing the exceptions, we can deliver that. So P Control is actually a tool that we're using to do exactly that. BNY Mellon is so high on the P Control technology that we actually acquired its parent group, Milestone Group. So this is something that it's probably going to be seen or really done more behind the scenes at BNY Mellon. You might not hear the P Control term yourself on a day-to-day basis, but it's something that's working behind the scenes to get you data and reporting more timely and accurately. And then, the last item I would note here, we've already begun to use ECRM, which is the inquiry management tool. We've implemented it across all of our operational areas. What ECRM does is it captures and tracks inquiries sent by clients so that we know really where the high volumes are. We know where resources are needed. We know where there's deficiencies in the process. You know, oftentimes, if you talk to a client or even folks internally at BNY Mellon, you might hear someone say, oh, we're, you know, we have high volumes over here or there's a nonresponsiveness for this particular situation or division or whatever. And you're really kind of relying on them being truthful and accurate and whatnot. Well, this gives us a way to put metrics behind it, actual numbers behind it, to track it so that we can ensure that the firm has the resources to that particular area where they're needed. Chris, I'd call out, you know, if you think about the LPAS over the past couple of years, right? This is a situation where we can allocate the appropriate resources to LPAS because now we have the metrics to determine, you know, where the statements coming in and whatnot. So again, these are all areas where BNY Mellon is really putting additional focus. And we're not relying on ourselves to create homegrown solutions. We're, you know, collaborating with the best-of-breed service providers in the industry. So I will pause there for questions. Try to make conscious enough time. Any questions for BNY Mellon?
Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
You're welcome. We're now to, I guess, Jeff, and now to Paul.
Yes.
Paul, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good morning, Treasurer Falwell, board members and staff. Thank you again for having me out to present. Again, my name for those on the call is Paul Falwell, and I am the Client Relationship Manager with Galliard. So to get into kind of the report, we can flip to page four. Just kind of give you a brief update where Galliard is as of December 31st. Assets, total assets under management, pretty flat from the third quarter, down about, you know, from 86 point, or 85.6 point down to 85.5. We did see a little bit of assets leave stable value. And again, this is due solely to participants choosing to move away from stable value, not necessarily from client departures. So we did see about $1.4 billion come out of stable value. That's 67.1. Last quarter was at 68.5. But that being said, we did see some growth in our standalone fixed income business, which is kind of the delta, the difference between the 85.5 and 67.1. We did see that grow about $1.3 billion over the quarter as fixed income returns were really solid this quarter and the fourth quarter. Really, one thing to just highlight, again, you know, the number of clients we have, 190-plus, 90% have been with us for five years. 84 have been with us for 15 years. North Carolina is getting closer every quarter to that 15-year. We're about 13 and a quarter years partnership. And just want to take this opportunity and thank you again for choosing Galliard as your stable value provider. Next page, we kind of revamped the org chart. You know, instead of listing all the names under the sun, we kind of, you know, kind of bifurcated it here, you know, with those, you know, reporting up to Galliard and those reporting up to our Allspring counterparts. You know, again, all on this page are dedicated to Galliard. And, you know, we have, as of the end of the year, about 103 LPAs. You know, really, the most important message on our org chart again is executive management with Mike Norman, Naeja Mirza. You know, they have been with the firm within a year or so of inception. They're not going anywhere. That's great to hear. And also, really important, it's the fixed income investment team, the bond portfolio traders, portfolio managers, haven't changed in years. So again, solid group still with us. So great, great there. If we turn to page seven, kind of give you an idea of where rates have headed since our last meeting. You know, again, I've shown this chart over the previous few quarters. Again, the light green line there is the Federal Reserve Fed rate. And again, that's held steady about five and a quarter, 5.5%. And again, that's been that way since July of '23. We did see that three-year constant maturity treasury line. That's that blue line. It did drop a little bit in the fourth quarters. You know, again, the market, you know, from what we've seen, the market believes that there will be some rate cuts coming in 2024. The Fed did hold firm in their late January meeting, but there is thoughts that rate cut may come as early as May. However, the number of cuts in degree is uncertain. Again, the drop in yields are beneficial to the fixed income returns in the fourth quarter provided an improvement to the state of North Carolina's stable value funds market book ratio. So again, yields up, or sorry, yields down, prices up. So, you know, that's what we're seeing there. And again, you know, even with the drop in yields, you know, the yield curve is still inverted. So as we look at it, again, it's normally shaped as upward sloping to the right. Right now, it's kind of inverted. What we saw with rates coming down from over the last quarter is they're still positioned up on the short end from the Fed rate, but they did parallel shift down in all the other maturity sectors or in the maturity dates. So we are seeing rates somewhat coming down. And again, on this chart, that green line, that kind of U shape, again, those are the net crediting rates or the net blended yields, net of fees of our stable value separate account book of business. And again, it does follow the movement of interest rates, but again, it does it on a lag due to the book value smoothing returns. So again, we're seeing that movement. Again, one of the headwinds that we see on, you know, the climb of the blended yields moving up is outflows. Outflows we can't control, but again, that does damper, you know, the amount of increase each quarter by quarter. Next page, we kind of have a snapshot of, you know, the portfolio as of December 31st, 2023. Again, figures on this page are indicative of the stable value fund performing as expected in the current interest rate environment. We did see assets come down just a little bit from the third quarter to the fourth quarter, you know, roughly about 0.62 million. And we saw outflows for the quarter, about 75 basis points out. So again, compared to other clients that I work with, the amount of outflows on an annual basis for the portfolio is quite low compared to our stable value book of business. I believe it's like 4.5, 4.6% for the year. What we've seen is more or less on our book of business, maybe negative eight to negative nine percent cash outflows. If we look at the lower left-hand quarter, quarter over quarter, and the characteristics, you know, again, value quality of the wrappers remains strong. Our value average quality of the underlying bonds still strong at AA. Contract issuers, those are the wrap providers, did not change at five. We did see that blended yield. And again, that's what the participants see. That did go up a basis point over the quarter. But again, we did see yields come down. As I showed in that three-year constant maturity chart, we did see yields come down about 84 basis points from last quarter. But albeit with those yields coming down, we do see the market book go up, you know, about 332 basis points. So really strong numbers there. You know, really, again, the portfolio is fully invested as we see on the portfolio distribution. We're fully invested in the markets, investment-grade sectors. So, you know, the portfolio, again, is doing what we expect it to do. Assets in the upper right-hand part, again, are climbing back up from that fourth quarter of 2018. And again, just to refresh, that was a rebalancing of Goldmaker accounts that translated about a 14% outflow in December of 2018. And again, slowly coming back. And that's what I have there. Any questions on any of the characteristics quarter over quarter? If we turn to the next page, kind of performance. Again, this is book value performance, principal plus interest. This is what the participants see. And again, these results are in line with expectations given the interest rate environment, you know, an elevated interest rate environment. And, you know, just as I mentioned last quarter, the comparison for the three-year constant maturity treasury, it's a little bit apples to oranges with stable value given that there really is no benchmark specific to stable value that deals with the unique amortization feature of stable value. Again, that's, you know, it's under 100% right now. So they're amortizing that loss in the crediting rate, which reflects into returns. You know, again, the three-year constant maturity treasury is, you know, we use that because, one, it's readily available. It's a safe measure given it invests in treasuries, and it has a similar three-year duration to the state of North Carolina's stable value fund. But really, what the driver is of the returns in the stable value fund are the underlying bond funds. And I'll get into the kind of the market value performance in a little bit. But again, really strong quarter for fixed income returns. And again, you know, what were, you know, the yields that are being reinvested for the stable value fund? As mentioned, they did go down 84 basis points, but still are close to 5%. So that being said, turning to page 10. Talked about kind of flows and how, you know, the state of North Carolina looks compared to our stable value separate account book of business. Again, you know, roughly about half outflows compared to our book. So, you know, those really help numbers as well. You know, I have some clients that, some corporate clients that are even up to 20, 21% outflows for the year, which is really quite unprecedented for stable value outflows. Must mean, and again, what we don't know is if participants are moving to other options in the plan or if they're withdrawing money out of the plan altogether. You know, it might indicate that participants are more aggressive with their allocations, more equities or whatnot. Page 11 kind of shows the last nine quarters of statistics that I talked about earlier. Again, what we see in the upper left-hand quarter, moving upward, you know, again, following the path of interest rates due to lag with the book value smoothing returns. But one thing is, you know, so you saw that one basis point uptake. Again, excuse me. The crediting rate for the fourth quarter actually comes from statistics from the third quarter. As the book value wrappers use that data to come up with crediting rates. And returns, if you recall, from the third quarter were negative. So that did dampen the kind of increase that we saw in crediting rates and coupled with, you know, the outflows that does also put a little damper on, you know, the amount of increase going forward. Duration, lower left-hand corner, again, very steady. But again, what we saw on the right-hand part of the page, we saw the market value, the market book ratio go up because market values went up due to the yields going down over the quarter. So exactly what we'd expect. Page 12, really nothing, nothing to really mention here. Again, consistent allocations, financial strength ratings and fees for the book value wrappers quarter over quarter, quarter over quarter are very consistent. So with that, we can turn, return to fees on page 16. Really, you know, is what we like to see, you know, it's not going up, but, you know, quarter over quarter at 27.1 basis points. And again, the, you know, the other expenses in the bottom reflects that administrative offset fee, which is a basis point. I believe that will be changing, which I'll follow up in terms of timing on that. So that'll be reflected in the fee chart going forward. And then there's a custody service fee of about 2/10 of the basis point included there. Getting into kind of the market value performance of the funds. You know, if we turn to page 20, again, this is where we saw really strong returns. The fourth quarter of 2023 was volatile in the markets. Stocks and bonds really did struggle early in the quarter as concerns of higher rates for longer-weighted clients investors. However, both stocks and bonds posted strong gains as inflation continued its trend downward and economic growth softened. So leading markets believe that rate hikes were at their peak from the last increase from July of last year, and that cuts were likely not too far down the road. The Fed, again, did pause at the end of January, holding rates steady, but there are indications that cuts could come in May. You know, again, the overall yields of the US bonds fell and in turn, prices higher, as you can see in the fourth quarter column, you know, ranging from an amount of, you know, 3% for the short-duration bond fund and anywhere from 4.75 to 5.76 net of fees in the intermediate durations portions of the investments. So really, and again, that's over the three-month period. So again, very strong fixed income returns from what we saw, especially in 2022. Really, for attribution, general themes here, you know, it's kind of been the same drivers of performance. Overweight allocation and security selection, to a degree, did not treasury spread sectors really drove performance, mainly in corporates, asset-backed securities, and agency mortgages. You know, from Galliard's perspective, where we kind of see where there's value in the investment-grade sectors going forward, corporates look a little rich to us, along with tax, both municipals. So we are trimming names there and mostly adding opportunistically where we see value. Agency mortgage-backed securities have reacted positively to the market perception that yields have peaked, and valuations here seem fair. Galliard continues to emphasize high-quality agency and US government guaranteed markets, including agency multifamily and SBA loans. Again, you know, we're finding value in high-quality asset-backed securities to an end yield mainly at the short end of the yield curve. And again, we're comfortable with our commercial mortgage-backed security positioning and have it added to that at this time. Those are my planned comments. If any questions, I can answer for stable value. Again, performing in line with expectations. Again, this is supposed to be the year of what we're told of fixed income with potential, you know, Fed cuts coming forward. Stable value is doing as it.
Mr. Treasurer, this is Greg Patterson. Just a quick comment. Two of our presenters have predicted a Fed rate cut in May. I'm going to go on the record and say I don't believe that's going to happen, and we'll see it in the fall. Nobody knows, but we'll see what happens. Thank you.
And just to clarify, I'm not predicting. I just see what the market, you know, you're looking forward yield curves, and that's the assumption that you can take.
Don't start backing up on us now.
This is recorded, so. Anyway, well, thank you very much for your time. And if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out. Thank you.
All right. Good morning, everyone. I'm Weston Lewis with Callon, joined by Elizabeth Hood, also with Callon. We're going to start by going through some of your performance, the market environment.
We're going to start by going through some of your, the performance, the market environment, performance of the options, and then we're going to spend some time in our second agenda item, talking a little bit more about your, the tier one, the Goalmaker allocations and the suitability of what we call that glide path. So how the equity positions decrease over time and how, you know, is that appropriate for your, for your participant base? So let's start off going back to performance and we'll talk a little bit about what happened in the quarter and as well as 2023. As we were looking at coming to you all around this time last year, it was on the heels of a very difficult environment in 2022 where almost all asset classes were negative, cash just slightly held as a positive return, but it was still a very low positive return. Fast forward to 2023, it's almost the exact opposite. All asset classes did well and there were a select few investments that just were exceptional, exceptional. So maybe on page three of our report, the one that says capital markets over right This, this shows kind of the, the environment here for domestic equities. You see very, very positive over the quarter on the bar charts there on the middle bottom there, very positive for a couple of asset classes. So you see that Russell one thousand growth, these are large cap growth stocks, just dominating value stocks for the year. This was a key theme, a lot of that performance driven by a select few names. You all have heard the saying, the magnificent seven, that is Alphabet, Amazon, Apple, Meta, Microsoft, Nvidia and Tesla. So just as, as we think about what drove those, those return differentials, those are the key stocks. Now, this is, this was a very narrow market, so this was the narrowest breadth of leadership since nineteen eighty-seven. So historically, that narrow leadership has signaled a not-so-helping market. We'll see if this time is a little different. Nvidia actually just reported this morning. So whereas we, as we think of like the tech bubble and some of the euphoria's in the past, this is one where the actual companies are really producing strong results. These are high-quality companies. Now, are they expensive or are they, you know, are their valuations justified? We don't know. Hindsight will be able to tell us, but certainly there has been a lot of enthusiasm behind these stocks driving a lot of their prices. Another smaller theme was, as you, Russell two thousand versus Russell one thousand, large beat small cap. Again, a lot of that driven by some of those dominant names in the mega-cap space. Interestingly, almost all of the return here for the entire year for the Russell two thousand small-cap stocks over the last quarter. We'll also point that out for bonds as we go through there. On the next page, we'll talk about some of the key themes in non-U.S. markets, non-U.S. markets, there is no magnificence. So the kind of the breadth of leadership and really that notion of rising tide lifting all boats certainly occurred here. One of the key themes, or I'll say lack of, really value versus growth, not, not so much of a story outside the U.S. There also, we've noted over past years that there's been a dollar strengthening that reversed and more, more pronounced in the quarter to where the dollar weekend that lifts the kind of dollar-translated returns of non-U.S. markets. And then we did see some, a little bit more small-cap outperforming kind of large-cap, and this is somewhat important to you all because you did add small-cap into your international program more recently. So it's good to see that, that turnaround occurring. One of the key areas that is getting a lot of attention is China and just the challenges within those markets. You'll note that emerging markets for the quarter and for the year, you know, lower results than developed markets. A lot of that had to do with the China influence. You see China was negative for both the quarter and for the year. A lot of people are asking, is this signal some opportunity or is this just, is it, is China cheap for a very good reason? So, but we don't know the answers to that, but we do, we can say that, you know, a lot of what China's performance has really offset some very good things that are occurring in India's markets to where India has performed exceptionally well. And a lot of that has been dampened by the influence of China there and the emerging markets index. Going on to fixed income on the next page, if you're looking at the bars there in orange and wondering, wow, those look like equity returns, it does look a lot like equity returns. It is very unusual to see the Bloomberg aggregate index up six point eight percent in any given quarter. So this was a very strong quarter for fixed income. As we were in here last quarter, we, we said, hey, this is very likely to be three straight years, three straight calendar years of negative returns for the Bloomberg aggregate index, would have been the first time that had occurred. Then in November, right on cue, fixed income markets started performing a lot better. Some of that had to do with what some are calling the dovish pivot from the Fed. So they, their language pivoted from higher, higher for longer to a little bit of the signal of projected rate cuts in 2024. Some of that has been really confused over what has happened, occurred here year-to-date in terms of January, the inflation numbers were a little bit higher than expected. And so they may not have the ability to be as dovish as, as say, the market expects. The, just to point out, on the very bottom of this page, we show a yield curve and it puts some visual behind some of Paul's comments about that inverted yield curve. But, you know, here we ended up, which is in the, the blue shade, kind of closer to the orange. These are all kind of similar colors, so I apologize. But the yield curve did shift back down. This is what we would think of this as an unstable or not really a good neutral position. Usually at the end curve, the yield curve is positively sloped and that's just not something that we've seen here for, for some time. So we will continue to await that more normal yield curve. Any questions on the market environment before we jump into performance? All right, so I will fast forward to the page where it says, that right there, investment fund balances. And we'll, we'll talk a little bit about where your participants are allocated. This is a little bit nuanced in that there are some Goalmaker assets in here. So about eight billion of, of the sixteen that you see here are invested in a typical Goalmaker, call it quasi-managed accounts service. So that, in that case, the participants get an asset allocation made for them based on their choice between conservative, moderate and aggressive. And then you have the tier two investments, which are participants investing, you know, wanting some more control over their investments and how they're, they're allocated. So not too much to really share here, but just to show that the investment or the total fund balances did increase predominantly from investment return up to sixteen billion. This is an increase from fourteen point seven, what we saw as of the end of September. Moving on to page six, we'll talk about, just one more page now. Sorry, I, it's going there, right there. We'll talk a little bit about performance of the passive options and then the performance of the active options. So this is the level of performance that your participants tend to see and that your options are, in, in the active cases, multi-manager options where they don't see the underlying managers, but they see the rolled up, call it composite performance. So as we, if we were to characterize your passive, net of passive performance of your options in line with expectations across all, all-time range, these investments are doing what you were hired to do, which is track their respective indices at a low fee. Moving down to the active net of fee options here, you'll, you'll note that we'll, we'll just exclude stable value in this comment, but three out of the four active options, fixed income, large-cap core, international equity, they outperformed their indices for both the quarter and the year. The small and mid-cap equity option was slightly behind the benchmark quarter and then reflected a more difficult 2023, and we'll talk about what drove that performance. Interestingly, what kind of, if you were to characterize what happened for both large-cap core and international equity, and this is shown in the three-year results, but both of these options had a difficult 2022 as interest rates did go up. Their, the performance of some of the managers really challenged performance there. It flip-flopped here in 2023 and those have now had excellent years for both the large-cap core and the international equity options. So, but the, you know, as I did highlight, the more challenged year for small and mid-cap equity, this is one where net of fees is outperforming a set index over the three- and five-year timeframe. Going ahead two pages, we'll talk a little bit more specifically. Just mentioned that we're going to talk a little bit later about some managers on watch list. First, TCW Core Plus, you'll note we go across and look at performance, a lot of the watch list recommendations that we'll talk about later, not necessarily performance-driven, more driven by some of the personnel changes. But we would say that their performance is in line with expectations over timeframes. Going, going down to McCoury, again, another manager that we'll talk about a little bit later. This one is maybe a little bit more due to personnel driving performance potentially. And you can see that last year, last three years, last five years, some challenge performance relative to their index and peers. If we were to just kind of say, what are the key points here on page eight, because there are a lot of numbers, your large-cap growth managers improved. That kind of dovetailing on the comment of what, what worked for the large-cap fund, 2022 was difficult, a lot of that due to the challenge of large-cap growth managers. 2023 was improvement, again, driven by performance of your large-cap growth managers, namely Sands, you see outperforming their index by close to ten percent. That was one that I think gave a lot of us some heartburn after looking at their performance at the end of 2022. All right, going forward two more pages, we'll talk about international and small and mid-cap. The good news, I guess, to point out for the international equity fund is that all managers outperformed their respective indices for the year. That we don't get to say that all the time because we have diversification in there and you would expect for some managers to offset, you know, one zig while the other one zags. And so, but it is good to note that all of them were ahead of their respective indices for the year. And then for the small and mid-cap option, again, this is one you all as a board have made some changes and will continue to ultimately implement with, with the new structure there. So this performance does reflect some of those changes being made. That said, as you go to Ernest and Brown, or the year both Ernest and Brown were behind the index, so some of that underperformance being driven, not necessarily by the changes that you all made, but by the managers that will remain. I would just point out, while Ernest's track record is shorter because we changed their, their strategy, if you will, to where we went from what was a small and mid-cap value strategy to a more small and mid-cap core strategy. If you were to link that performance together, Ernest is performing certainly in line with expectations, some good outperformance coming from that linked performance over time. And then similar for Brown and that, you know, performance over the last year, this is, Brown is a manager that tends to do well in, in down markets and protect better on the downside. They, they can keep up in up markets, depending on the type of market, but this certainly was a challenging one for them where their index was up close to nineteen percent and they did lag their index a little bit over the last year. And then I think as we're, you know, just maybe prior prioritizing the time, there isn't a whole lot to really point out here in performance. Maybe just, if there are any questions, I'll, I'll stop there and let Elizabeth move on to discuss the glide path utility analysis. Any questions for Weston?
Patty, we'll move to the next document. Perfect, thank you. Start on page two. So Weston covered the plan. Again, we're going to focus now on tier one, asset allocation options. This is a little bit more complex. So unlike, say, TCW, who's just buying bonds, or Brown, who's just buying small and mid-cap stocks, when we look at Goalmaker, we're looking at asset allocation decisions, underlying building blocks, composition there, so it's more complicated. So we recommend every three to five years, taking a deeper dive into Goalmaker to say, all right, let's make sure we understand what's going on underneath the hood here and also let's make sure that this is suitable for participants. And so that's really the focus today is, is this suitable? The analysis itself follows, so the DOL came out in 2013 and said, we agree, here are some tips that we think you should follow in this type of analysis. When the DOL gives tips, we typically view that as a strong indicator of best practice. So the analysis that we've done addresses each of those tips, again, trying to wrap our arms around, is this suitable for participants? And the analysis we'll go through today, we pulled out the key components that are most directly relevant for the board, and then we have additional analytics in the appendix. So for information for reference, you have trouble sleeping at night, we have a lot more data points in the back. But the focus here, again, suitability. Important to note and remind the board that you all have responsibility as it relates to the methodology, the asset allocation and the underlying blocks within Goalmaker. That is not an area where power will take fiduciary responsibility. These are board decisions. So again, all more reason to take that deeper dive and make sure everybody has a good understanding of what Goalmaker is, how it works and how it's composed and composed in fees. Again, I want to distinguish, we keep saying suitability, suitability and optimal, optimality are a little bit different. We're kind of at step one here today, saying, is this suitable? Are participants well-served here? Does this overall do a good job for participants? If the answer is no, we have a whole other set of analysis that we have to do, right? We're done, we go back and figure out something else. If the answer is yes, it's suitable, we then have a little bit kind of thinking about this in decision tree terms. We can go two different ways. We could say it's suitable, and we also think it's pretty optimal. We think that this is a good, suitable today. We think this is a great path to continue down for the next seven, ten, twenty years. Or we can say it's suitable, participants have been well-served, but we also think we might want to explore some other options. Maybe there are some things here that we think we could revisit to see if something else, is there a better way, if you will? So spoiler alert, we do find Goalmaker to be suitable at this time. And there are some questions that we might want to explore further. So if we go to the next page, page eleven, we highlight some of those there. Again, very important, suitable, Callan. Our analysis did come back and say we believe Goalmaker is suitable, but there's two areas of consideration that we do think warrant further exploration. First is looking at the actual participant experience and participant's behavior. So a lot of this modeling is dependent upon the inputs and there's a lot of assumptions. In general, we find that public DC plans tend to deviate a little bit from those standard exceptions. There's not one typical participant. We found that to be very much the case with North Carolina's participants. So taking a look at the savings patterns, we take all the data and we So taking a look at the savings patterns, we take all the data and we slice and dice it different ways. We look at the average, so to take you back to your statistics classes. You think about, there's three different averages. If you think about the mean, you take all the assets in the plan, divided by the number of participants, what's the average balance? That number is significantly higher than the median. The median is when you take all those different balances and say, what's the number in the middle? The average is three to four times higher than the median. And then we look at the third one, which is the votes of what numbers appear the most. They're very different. So what we find is participant balances are kind of clustered here and there. We have some with really high, some that are lower, but they're different. So we have kind of two different areas. So when we think about standard assumptions, they don't necessarily fit here because we have a lot of differences going on with participants that are in the plan. So that's something that we tried to look at a little bit. The model also looks at tenure. So the standard assumption has been employees start historic around 25. They stay somewhere, they retire at 65, they have a 40-year tenure within the organization. That used to be the case, but we know now that's really not the case across the board, right? So especially in public plans, participants tend to join a little bit later in their career. Maybe not stay as long, especially in the case of safety workers, they tend to retire earlier. So that 40-year, while it's kind of the standard, it's not necessarily the real experience. So that's an area that we can dig in a little bit deeper. And when we get into the analysis, you'll see one of the big impacts there is that 40 years, we're looking at an assumption that they're also getting a pension benefit and that they're accruing that for 40 years. So if they work less time, accruing less benefit there. And we'll talk about the impact of that as well. And then in terms of distributions, we're finding that most participants are using this as a savings vehicle, but not necessarily taking the income from retirement. So that's another area that we can explore. The second leg there that we think warrants further consideration is changes to Goalmaker itself. So we've talked a lot about the Empower transition from Prudential to Empower. That's also impacting Goalmaker. So they've announced a number of changes coming up that we think warrant additional consideration. So should we take advantage of some of the new options that are coming along the line? We'll talk about what those look like. And then also just keeping an eye on the program itself. So Empower has said that they are committed to maintaining Goalmaker as a program. So in the near term, we're comfortable, we're confident that this will still continue to be an option. Looking longer term, Empower has said that they're not marketing this to new clients. So that gives us a little bit of pause as we think about 10, 20 years down the road, how much time and attention will still be devoted to Goalmaker? So just something, again, not, not a near-term concern, but something that the board should be aware of. All right. So that's our high-level summary. We'll skip over on page four, this just outlines, I refer to the DOL's tip to use as our guideline. This is more detail on those. Page five gives us a summary of the plan itself. So what are we looking at here between the 401K plan participants, the 457? Biggest takeaway from this page, as Weston mentioned, of the $16 billion in participant assets, roughly half of those are allocated through Goalmaker. So this is a very big part of participant balances that we're looking at today. Page six breaks that down into the three different glide paths or the three different options. So participants will choose between a conservative, moderate or aggressive path. Those that don't make a decision are defaulted into the moderate. And so not surprising, the moderate, if you add up all those numbers, it's almost half of the Goalmaker assets are in moderate, about 48%. So a little bit of an overview on page seven, I think everyone's fairly familiar with Goalmaker. But just a quick reminder, Goalmaker takes in the participant's age, time to retirement and their preference for being even more conservative or more aggressive. And then allocates that participant into the appropriate glide path, the appropriate fund based on that age and expected retirement. So unlike, if you're familiar with the target date fund, that has kind of more of a smooth glide path, which is just go in based on the average date, Goalmaker has blocks. And we'll look at this when we see the glide path, but instead of kind of gliding down, they jump at different increments. And then on page eight, I mentioned that there are some changes coming up. So we've spent a lot of time, I know Jeff has too, talking to Empower. And this has happened over time. So when Prudential was running the program, now Empower, periodically they'll go back and say, hey, is there any, are there any enhancements that we can roll out that would help our clients and their participants? So we're seeing a few of those coming down. One, the fund itself will change. So it used to be that participants would go into their specific fund and then move to the next fund when they hit that age or that time until retirement. Now the fund itself will move. So that's a little bit more operational, less directly impactful. But smoothing that down, the biggest one that will impact the board's decision is the number of fund years within each of those glide paths. So right now there are nine portfolios. So we'll be, on the other page, you saw the range. So for example, there's zero to five years, pre and post-retirement, six to 10, 11 to 15. Adding all those up, we have nine options going forward. We'll have the option to add more. So theoretically we could tighten those ranges or we could make tighter bands as we get closer to and from retirement. There are a number of different ways, but we'll have more optionality. And so then the question is, is 14 a better number? Should we stick with nine? Should we go somewhere in there? So some other considerations and options that we'll have available with the Goalmaker enhancements that we can consider. Okay, we've mentioned the glide path. We'll take a look at the glide path. And here again, we're talking about the asset allocation on page nine between stocks and bonds. So we break this out. The first is looking at the allocation to growth assets. So primarily equities, so the US stocks, international stocks. And this also brings in a piece of the inflation component, which is REITs and commodities. So what you'll notice here, we're looking at the age, so from left to right, as the participant is younger and then gets closer to retirement, what is the allocation to growth assets? The blue line at the top is the aggressive glide path, Goalmaker glide path allocation. The orange on the bottom, conservative. The gray line in the middle, we call it Callan consensus. So these are all the off-the-shelf target date fund glide paths, equally weighted. That's, that's our way of getting it a peer average. What you'll see here is with the exception of the aggressive glide path within Goalmaker, all of the allocations are more conservative than the average target date fund glide path allocation. So fewer growth assets. Not surprising corresponding to that. On the next page, page 10, we show diversifying assets. So unlike growth, these are the diversifiers. So fixed income, stable value, TIPS. Most of these are higher. So except for the aggressive, the moderate and the conservative allocations have a higher exposure to fixed income, to TIPS. And then page 11, it just breaks out that inflation-sensitive assets themselves. And you'll see here, higher overall than the average. Page 12, and again, some of this is just for information, making sure everybody's informed. We show the different underlying asset class building blocks. So what asset classes do participants have exposure to within Goalmaker? And what you'll see here is all of the asset classes that are very widely used across different target date providers are represented within Goalmaker. So you all are right in line with peers. There are a few that you don't have exposure to. So for example, bank loans are not included in Goalmaker. Only 13% of other off-the-shelf glide paths tend to have allocations there. So you're not an outlier by any stretch. So we'll shift now, we've talked a little bit about Goalmaker, what it is, where it's going. Now we want to take a look at outcomes. So what are we expecting as we look forward in terms of participant experience, retirement readiness, how we look at that? On page 13, this is how we think about measuring success, is by looking at the key risks that participants are facing. And they vary over a participant's life cycle. And so we've moved this from, you know, again, on the left, you've got your old, younger participants with a longer runway. Their biggest risk is shortfall risk. So not saving enough to have enough in retirement. As we get closer to retirement, the risks are different. Then we worry about downside risk. If there's a big drawdown right before I retire, I'm in trouble. There's much more risk whereas if, if the markets tank, we have 24, I have much more time to make that up. So as we get closer to retirement, we're more sensitive to changes in market values. Also inflation, so making sure, even if we've saved enough, we need to make sure that that spending power remains. And then later in our lifecycle, we worry about longevity risk. So the risk of outliving our assets. And here we look at actuarial assumptions. We'll talk a little bit about the allocation of men versus women in the plan. And that's important because actuarially, we assume that women will live longer than men. So they have a greater risk looking at longevity, greater risk of outliving their assets. So these are the four measures that we focus on and again, taking a look at. There's no one right glide path that will fully protect participants from each of these risks. So we want to understand what they are and take a look at the trade-offs as we evaluate the glide path. 14 shows the age breakdown again. So as we think about those risks, the fact that different age brackets and cohorts are subject to different risk. What you'll see here is 70% of the 401K participants are 40 years or older. So in above, so older than average participant base within these plans. Page 15, we get into the modeling. So how do we assess the outcomes? We model them. So we start here with what we're calling the best case, which is really kind of the old standard. That 20, you start working 25, work till you're 65, 40 years of accumulating social security, of accumulating defined benefit, and also wage and salary increases here. Within the plan, I mentioned the gender, so 70% females are definitely a much higher skew towards females who again, tend to have a longer expected lifespan. And then on the right-hand side, we just show the average deferral rate over time. So when we model this forward on page 16, one of the ways we look at and define a successful retirement is income replacement. So in retirement, how much of your working wife wage are you able to replace? What we find is in retirement, participants typically don't need to replace 100% of the income expenses are lower for various reasons. So the general, again, looking at a number of different data sources, generally between 80 and 90% is sufficient through retirement. And so here we're looking at an 85% target. We're looking at three different sources of income to see how much participants will need from the 401K, from the 457 plans to reach an 85%. And we're looking at three sources again, social security, DB benefit and the 401K 457 income. It's a little bit conservative. We figure participants probably have some outside savings that are not represented here, but we'd rather be too conservative than, than set people up to be surprised. So here, participants only, so if we look at, and I should mention this too, we have the general and the teachers. Teacher's salary assumptions are a little bit higher. And so they have, they have to work a little bit harder to replace in retirement relative to the general. So the general, here they're getting 25, we're projecting 25% of income replacement by social security, 69% by the DB plan. So they're over 85%. So they really, you know, for those on the phone, kind of air quotes, you don't necessarily need the benefit from, or the savings from the 401K 457 plan. Pretty rosy outcome there. For the teachers, just 3%, they only need 3% to get to 85%. So that pension benefit is really making up a huge chunk of the income replacement in retirement. The next page looks at this a little bit differently, the projected risk of shortfall. So what's the risk that you don't have enough assets to retire? Again, the general employees need zero, the teachers need three. All of these scenarios exceed that. So again, this is part of why we call it the best case, a very rosy outcome. And when we were reviewing this, Chris, Chris and Jeff had a good point. They said, well, but we don't typically have employees that stay here for 40 years. It's typically somewhere less. So what if we looked at that? So on page 18, we showed the average participant tenure. This is using Empower data and Jeff was able to get us additional data looking at participants who retired in 2022. For those, we found that the tenure ranged from 22 to 27 years of service. So it's all right, that's a lot different than 40. What would that look like? So we modeled those on page 19. Here we call it the good case. This is 30 years. So somebody joins the plan at 30 and works until they're 60 and accumulates benefits for 30 years. The general assumptions are typically the same. And on the next page, on page 20, when we look at that income replacement, you'll see that participants start needing more from the 401K plan, from the 457 plan to hit that 85% replacement. So because they haven't been working as long, there's less social security accumulated. There's also less defined benefit, benefit we're accumulating there. So those numbers are lower. So the general employees are going to need 14% to replace income from the SRP plans. And the teachers are going to need 23%. On the next page, page 21, well, what are the risks there of that shortfall? So again, the general employees are going to need 14%. The median that they're going to get here is 13, so about a 41% of reaching the 85% total. And then 7% for teachers, again, higher salary, higher growth. They're going to need a little bit more to replace that higher number. So here, not quite as rosy. So still a good chance. If you look at the moderate and aggressive, good solid chances for general above 50%. The moderate, or the conservative rather, is really struggling to get participants up to that 85%. And again, there's, there's a number of different other factors, right? So if someone's working here for 30 years, they probably worked somewhere else. There's probably more social security. There's probably another 401K benefit somewhere else. But just looking at the experience here within the DSD. Okay. And then getting even less rosy, so we have the median page on page 22. So here we say, again, thinking about that 22, 2022 experience of participants retiring with 22 to 27. And we said, what if they only worked here for 20 years? So starting at age 40, retiring around age 60. So the starting salary is a little bit higher because they're coming in further in their career. But when you get to page 23, coming back to that income replacement, there's a much, much, much higher reliance on their SRP balances. Again, less tenure accumulating social security, a lot less benefit coming in from the DB plan. And so they're needing more from their 401K, their 457 savings to replace that income in retirement. And then on page 24, again, it's just going to be really hard to get to those numbers. So if a general, if someone in the general plans needs 32%, they're going to get between 6 and 6.5% with the current savings rate, with the current Goalmaker asset allocation glide path. So something to think about, and again, as we talk about wanting to dig deeper, take a deeper look at the individual glide paths and look at what's available. These are the kinds of things that we recommend digging in and studying deeper. We know that participants' experience is different from those standard assumptions that are typically used. We know that the saving patterns are distinct and disparate. We've kind of got two different population groups. So those are the kinds of things that could be addressed to say, okay, we know it's been suitable. Participants have been well-served, but what about seven, 10, 15 years down the road? Should we be looking at this differently? We think this is a great opportunity to go back and revisit this. The last in-depth review was in 2018. So it's been about six years. So with the passage of time, the new information, the expanded modeling capabilities. Again, this is something as we learn more, we expand the ability to take a look at these things. So we're recommending not a change now, but just to continue to look at the glide paths themselves, look at Goalmaker and see if there are other opportunities going forward.
Any questions for Elizabeth?
There are a lot at you.
This is Greg Patterson. I have a question, please. One of the risks you discussed, which I 100% agree with, is the risk a participant has of running out of money in retirement. We don't have that risk for participants in the state pension plan based upon the solvency of the pension plan. An employee cannot outlive their money. I know that other qualified fine contribution plans are now offering participants in a I know that other qualified defined contribution plans are now offering participants an annuity option whereby they could put the risk of outliving their money on an insurance company. And then based on the claims paying ability of the insurance company, that participant would never run out of money. They are essentially taking a portion of their defined contribution asset and converting it to, similar to a defined benefit plan. Do we have the ability to offer an income annuity in the plan? Or has that ever been looked at in the past?
This is Mike McCann with Empower. Empower, actually, that's one of the nice things with coming over to the Empower platform. We are rolling out what's called a in-plan lifetime income option. So we'll have more to share with the board on that in the coming. When you, when you think about features like an in-plan lifetime income option, along with other features that we've discussed in the past around a managed advice program, those are the types of things that are big enhancements to keep participants in the plan. With your big focus on making sure participants know that they can stay in plan, they don't have to roll over. Those are the two big components that a lot of the firms, where you see those rollover outs going quarter after quarter, that, that's the niche need that those firms are going after. So yes, long story short, we have, we have additional options now that we're on the Empower platform that can help participants stay in plan to get features like that that are done at a, a much better cost than what's available retail.
That's, thank you, and that's great to hear. And I agree that if we were to do a deep dive on assets going out of the plan, it's a financial advisor, most of which, who I believe are well intentioned, are taking that participants defined contribution and turning it into a lifetime income stream. And we don't have anything to compete with that. So thank you.
Elizabeth, do you know if any of our peers do something similar to that?
Somewhat rare. There has been some movement, and I think some recent legislation has made it a little bit more fiduciary friendly in selecting these in-plan annuities. But it is still, you know, that I think the industry keeps waiting for either kind of 2.0 or, or maybe even 3.0 of kind of quick sort of income annuity options there are. But, but right now, it, I would say it's still pretty rare to, less than 10%.
Well, so of your peers that do, the adoption rate's very low. So the participants that actually take advantage of that is very, very small. So they're still treating this as a savings plan as opposed to...
Well, because everybody that's in these plans are also have that defined benefit, right? So you do have a component of that regardless, right? So.
Exactly. So they say, well, why would I need that? I already have an annuity, right? Why would I pay extra to do this?
Well, and we also have the option of taking, taking your DC money and buying through the, through the transfer benefit option, buying an annuity as well. So there's that option that, that is available to, to all of the members of the plans.
Greg, good to the treasurer. That's an excellent point. You'll be on this board longer than I am. And I think, you know, continuing asking this question is very, very valuable to our members. And, and I'm clear on a lot of things, but I never have gotten exactly clear on how people can annuitize through the defined benefit plan, the 401k stuff. So maybe in a future meeting, we have a little brief discussion about that.
Well, treasurer, since you'll be retiring at the end of the year, you may need a financial advisor, and I'll be glad to set up a meeting to talk about how we can do this for you.
Touche. I think of a better person.
I shouldn't say retiring, you'll be moving on to another job, I hope.
I was about to correct you, but I was just going to let it lie.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else? Okay. And that was, that was Elizabeth and Weston, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for joining us. Board members, do you have any more questions about item number nine on our agenda? Yeah, hearing none, we'll go to Chris Morris and Chris, the two Chris's.
Yep. Good afternoon. I'll turn it over to Chris Bird here, who's going to do the, the first item, I guess the first two items, which is the watch list recommendations for TCW and McQuarrie.
Thank you for that. Just a quick overview of the compliance reporting memo, divested policy, prohibited holdings.
Chris, you want to do that?
Actually, I can jump to you.
So I'll start with TCW. So the watch list, a quick overview of the watch list. Investment managers are evaluated for watch list consideration based on three factors. Consistent underperformance compared to benchmarks and peers, major changes in their investment approach, and significant shifts in organization structure. Starting with TCW, staff and talent recommend adding the TCW core plus fixed income strategy to the watch list. This recommendation is based on notable changes in overall leadership of the firm and specifically in the management of the core plus fixed income strategy. Despite the retirement of key figures, the team remains strong and experienced. Organization is transitioning to new leadership while maintaining its process and philosophy, which has been successful over time. TCW manages, as we had mentioned earlier, a significant portion of the active fixed income white label funds, focusing on outperforming the market through strategic security selection and sector rotation. Touching on a little bit about the leadership, we've had a new president, CEO that's been appointed, and upcoming retirements of CIOs that were the founders of the strategy. And then just to kind of reiterate, these changes are part of a comprehensive succession plan to ensure stability and continued growth. So while there have been notable leadership changes and some challenges in performance, the firm's foundational investment philosophy remains unchanged. Situation warrants close observation from staff and talent to ensure new leadership continues to adhere to disciplined investment strategy that has kind of served investors well. Any comments or questions on TCW? I'll jump to McQuarrie.
Do you want to vote on TCW first?
Can we put all of them together?
Um, I suppose unless there's...
Yeah.
Vote them together. Yeah, go ahead.
We'll just vote them together if nobody objects. Are you ready for a motion?
Well, we'll cover McQuarrie first, and then we'll have a motion.
Go ahead, Chris.
So McQuarrie, very similar, you know, in terms of the criteria for the watch list. Were they different? Worse, staff accounts kind of recommending the watch list from McQuarrie is due to their five-year underperformance, which coincides with the departure of key personnel, indicating potential issues and expansion in approach. McQuarrie plays a significant portion, as we touched earlier in the large cap equity white label fund. The strategy is advised senior portfolio manager since 2019, succeeding their original league despite recent retirements, including a senior portfolio manager in 2022. Team is still well experienced, involving all members in investment decisions to ensure comprehensive analysis and decision-making. McQuarrie's kind of approach is grounded in behavioral finance, focusing on kind of the discrepancy between a stock market's price and intrinsic value. It emphasizes a concentrated portfolio of best ideas, progression across economic sectors, and involves collaborative research process for selecting investments. This approach integrates detailed processes, sector weighting, and structured portfolio construction methodology, aiming at long-term outperformance.
Do we have a motion to approve the manager watch list recommendations by staff?
I'll make that motion. Steve Beam.
Do I hear a second?
This is Greg's second.
Motion second being made, spread the discussion. Hearing none, the board will call the roll.
Treasurer Falwell. Chavella Thomas.
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson.
Aye.
Greg, Jeff, get you to the second, so I need your vote.
Aye.
Nels Roslin.
Aye.
And Robert Hillman.
What's left on the agenda? I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry.
We have two items left, treasurer, SMID cap value transition update, and then the investment compliance. So we'll hit both of those if it works good with that. I'll touch base on the SMID cap value transition update. Just as a reminder, the board, at the previous board meeting, the board approved the hiring of Alliance Bernstein to run a SMID cap value mandate, ultimately replacing WEDGE, which was terminated last summer. So after the board meeting, we have successfully negotiated the contract with Alliance Bernstein and have began, have begun transitioning those assets. We're using BlackRock as the transition manager to transition assets from the legacy portfolio where it's currently at, the BlackRock SMID cap index fund, where we're at least at, to the, the target portfolio, so the Alliance Bernstein portfolio. So the transition itself began this week, and we anticipate it wrapping up next week with the, the target date of transitioning the assets to the Alliance Bernstein portfolio toward the end of the next week. So far, the transition's gone fine. Expected costs for the transition with respect to commissions is around $150,000 or four and a half basis points of the market value of the portfolio. So that's consistent with what it was when we transitioned out of WEDGE and is consistent with our expectations as well. So we're on track there. Like I said, we're, we're about ready to transfer the assets to, to Alliance Bernstein to, to have them manage that part of the SMID cap white label fund. So happy to answer any questions with regards to where we are with that process.
Any questions? Next.
The last item is the investment compliance update. I'll turn it back over to Chris Bird.
Thank you. Now, a quick overview, investment policies are rules that guide how investment funds like, you know, SRP trusts should not invest in ethical, legal, political reasons. Prohibited holdings are a specific investment center ban under these policies. So in December 2023, the annual prohibited investment list, for SRP were updated. Following that list, SRP staff identified two prohibited holdings subject to the investment identified, Shinnai Petroleum Corp. and Udeliver PLC, which are on the Iran and companies boycotting Israel prohibited investment list respectively. Upon discovering these holdings and in accordance with our investor management agreement and apartments of investment contract prohibition policy, we promptly notified all managers on December 22, 2023. We instructed all relevant managers to divest from prohibited holdings within a 180-day period, starting from December 21, 2023. SRP staff is still diligently overseeing the management portfolios to ensure that complete timely divestment from these prohibited holdings. In regards to executive order, BNY Mellon continues and continued daily compliance with prohibited holdings. No other companies related to the presidential executive order 14032. No SRP investment managers were invested in the CCMCs during the quarter. Investment guideline section, SRP staff, again, continues to monitor investment management guidelines by a daily basis. There are no material issues during the quarter.
Any questions for Chris? Treasurer, there were no, there were no public comments.
Okay. No public comments. We'll hereby deem the public comment section closed. As we go around the horn, is there anyone who would like to make a comment or ask a With that, I just want to thank the staff and all the board members for making this, and all the presenters for making this jump up on the table so efficiently this morning. I want to also say that even though it's not exactly a 401, 457 situation, we continue to closely monitor the decision by UNC Healthcare to divorce from our pension system and our state health plan. We continue to monitor OSHR's thoughts about divorcing from our open enrollment platform, which combines the flex benefit open enrollment, which includes childcare, dental vision, with actually selecting which plan that you want to choose for healthcare. We've been told that OSHR is standing down on our proposal at this time. The reason I bring this up to this board is that you're all participants in this plan, you're all taxpayers. In addition to that, when you actually start connecting the dots and looking at which companies are getting this business from UNC Healthcare, and which ones are pitching OSHR, you'll realize that that has a whole lot to do with Blue Cross Blue Shield. And so we will be putting all that in black and white going forward. But it doesn't matter who's trying to do it. If we're trying to create chaos for those that teach for something serve, I'm going to show up, I'm going to stand up, and I'm going to speak up. So very important. And lastly, just want to thank all of you for your participation. And we, our staff remains in the check delivery business, and we always rule under the mantra that doing right's rarely wrong. But oftentimes, when you're managing one of the largest pools of public money in the world, you don't mind being wrong for the right reasons. And so we monitor that also. So with that, thank you for giving me an opportunity to join you. We have a couple of lawsuits that I'm trying to monitor also, that are happening at the same time this is happening. So thank you for allowing me to join you remotely. And I'd like to adjourn our meeting today in honor of Black History Month and the contributions that African Americans have, are, and continue to make to our society. And with that, I'll adjourn.
May I have, may I speak?
Yes.
This is Chavella, and I just wanted to share my, my, my honor that I'm getting. I'm actually being honored as the distinguished alumna representing North Carolina Central at the MEAC tournament. They're going to give me an honor.
Congratulations, Chavella.
Congratulations. Terrific. Well deserved. Thank you.
And Chavella, I'm so glad you brought that up because if you had to give me a test on how to end that word, alumni, alumna, and alumnus, I would fail every time. So thank you for, for, thank you for, congratulations, and thank you for letting us know that and, and further confirming the right way to say things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just want to say, when you have, when you went to, when you go to UNCG like I did, or went to Salem State, you have Wake Forest University, then you have Salem College. People get kind of prickly in Salem about how you use that word and what context. So thank you for doing that. So thank you for doing that this morning.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Motion made by Chavella, second. Do I hear a second?
Jim, this is Greg, a second.
Thank you. Jim, thank you for being there in person. And thank you, Controller Roslin. And enjoy, continue our partnership with the controller's office. They're in a revamp of the system. And with that, the board will call the roll.
Treasurer Falwell.
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson.
Aye.
Greg Patterson.
Aye.
Nels Roland, Nels Roslin.
Aye.
Steve Beam.
Aye.
And Robert Hillman.
Aye.
And we're here by adjournment. Thank you all very much.